Good morning. Today is Wednesday, October 17, 2018. This is meeting of the Commissioners Court for Grimes County, Texas. We are at 114 West Bubington Avenue, Anderson, Texas. For those of you that might be trying to view this in TV land, you're only getting the audio portion, but we will have the audio portion running and available for you to hear and listen to as we try to work the bugs out of our video system. The meeting is called to order. I'd ask that you stand. We'll ask Gary Williamson to lead us in the invocation. Remain standing for the pledges to the U.S. and the Texas flag. Mr. Williamson?
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity for us to gather this morning for the business of Grimes County. Look after our leaders as they make their wise decisions for all of the citizens that we have around us. Lord, look after our first responders and protect them as they make their calls and their rounds. Also, Lord, look after our armed forces personnel, that they protect us from the evils that may even prevent us from having this meeting. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every duty and justice for all. Honor Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Would you be seated, please? We would now like to receive any public comments. We look forward to hearing from the citizens of Grimes County. If you do have a public comment, we'd ask that you come to the podium, identify yourselves by name, and speak loudly so the microphone will indeed pick you up. Are there any public comments this morning? Yes, sir.
Yes, Commissioners Judge Dave Lilly, Grimes County Emergency Manager. I just want to comment on the recent storms that we've had in the region and in the county and kind of reiterate a concern that we have about that. We've had a lot of rain, as everybody knows, especially on the north side of the county, and a lot of roads have been flooded. A fair number of our county roads are still impacted. Some are still closed due to flooding, and there's a couple of state roads that are still closed. I say this to make the point again that for our citizens, please honor the barriers. If you see a barrier up on a, whether it's a county road or a state road, do not go around the barrier. There has been a number of high water rescues that have had to be taken, have had to be done in the last couple of days, mainly because people were driving into high water and having to be rescued out of it. Most counties now are also, and the state, are taking a very hard stance on this, and they're starting, they've actually been making arrests. So if someone goes around a barrier, not only are they putting their life in danger, but they stand a very real good chance of getting arrested for violating the barrier. So again, we ask people, please turn around and don't drown.
Thank you.
The only state highway we still have closed-
Sir, do you want to make a public comment?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Would you identify yourself?
David Dobinsky, County Commissioner precinct two.
Yes, sir.
The only state highway we still have closed is 244. 30 was opened about 6:30 this morning. I got off the phone about 30 minutes ago and called Schrader, who is our county supervisor for TxDOT. And county roads that are still closed are the ones up west of Iowa that go through the river bottom. All the others are open. There are some rough spots, and many of those roads up there, we did not get as much damage down in the south end as they did up in the north end. So we've got a lot of work to do. The road bridge has a lot of work to do up there in that area.
Thank you. Are there, yes, yes ma'am?
Hi, I'm Rebecca Duff. I'm the election administrator for Grimes County, and I'm here to make a public comment about the November the 6th election coming up. And I want to say that we have 16,354 registered voters in the county, and we've had applications of 994 at this moment of applications for ballot by mail. The last day to apply for ballot by mail is October the 26th. And early voting starts October the 22nd through November the 2nd. We have extended hours on both Mondays, that's the 22nd and the 29th, from 7:00 to 7:00 in the morning, 7:00 in the morning till 7:00 at night. And then October the 28th is extended hours, that's a Sunday, from 2:00 to 7:00 P.M. And the last day for me to accept an application, if I hadn't already mentioned it, is October the 26th. The deadline to register to vote has already passed, but if you don't have a card, please call my office. We'd be glad to have another one sent to you. Usually gubernatorial elections are, has a lot of interest in it, but this is like presidential. We have just had a huge amount. We're going to have a big turnout, but please encourage people to go and vote, and that's, I have sample ballots at my office. I'd be glad to give anybody one that would like to have it. Thank you very much. Unless y'all have a question.
We don't have questions or any comments.
Thank you. Great.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda items number three, number four, number five. Consent agenda item number three, consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. Four, consider and take action to approve payroll. Five, consider and take action to approve budget amendments and/or line item transfers. If there are no comments, I move to approve consent agenda items three, four, and five.
Second.
Since you made a public announcement, I'll take her second. There is a motion before the court by Commissioner Mallett, second by Commissioner Walker, to approve consent agenda items three, four, and five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda item number six, Grimes County Firefighters Association, consider and take action to approve the boundaries between Todd Mission and Plantersville C. Attachment six. Is there someone from the association this morning that would like to visit with us? And before you do, even though you have an attachment, Commissioners, in your book, this is a full-size map, a little bit bigger, so you can see all of the- Mr. Attorney, would you like a copy of that?
Only if you want me to have one.
I'd love for you to have a copy and-
Just passing it out. We'll ask Mr. Goldstein.
Mary, there's one for Mr. Pascal.
He's going to want to be paid. I just want to-
Write that chart.
Okay, yes, sir.
My name's Courtney Allwood. I'm here on behalf of the Grimes County Firefighters Association. On the map, Todd Mission and Whitehall Fire Department has come to an agreement, and that's the old line that Plantersville shared with Whitehall. Whitehall has signed his side, saying that he agrees with that boundary line. The question today is between Plantersville and Todd Mission. The shaded area, which I believe y'all's big map is green and the little map you got is shaded blue. The shaded portion is what Todd Mission has asked for, and Plantersville turned them down and said, no, they didn't want to give them that much. So it's brought to the Commissioners Court to decide on boundaries. The blue line running through the middle is the projected new highway coming through the neighborhood. So other than that, I'm leaving it up to Commissioners to discuss.
Since we see what Todd Mission is requesting to have, what is Plantersville requesting?
Plantersville made the statement that Todd Mission needs to stay in the city limits of Todd Mission.
And the reasoning behind that is?
I cannot speak on that. I am not, I'm not representing Plantersville Fire Department.
Was there any type of study on response times to certain areas within that map?
May I have permission to address that?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Attorney. There's one for you as well.
How are you?
How are you? This is for each and every one of you. Have a good day.
Good morning. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Could I get you to step over to the podium and again, identify yourself?
My name is Cassandra Malone. I'm with Todd Mission Volunteer Fire Department. I'm the Assistant Chief. I've just handed a packet to the Commissioners, Judge, and the Attorney, and it has within it a study on the response times, as well as if you look in your table of contents, it has a bunch of other things that you might have questions about. So that is your personal information packet. As you peek through it, be sure to ask me any questions. I do think our City Manager Neil did have something he wanted to address you with.
Okay.
Judge, Commissioners, we're just here to get an answer to a pretty simple straightforward question. When there's an emergency, respond. I think it's again, straightforward, whoever's closest. The packet y'all have shows the response times and the mileage breakdowns. We worked with 911 to design this map, and it's just us responding to who's closest. Anything that's over five miles, road miles, from a fire station is automatically ranked in ISO 10, which is, you might as well be on Mars. You get no discount in your homeowners insurance. There's no additional aid there. So we are just trying to respond and help outside of our city limits to the rest of the county and give a hand to the places that are a little further out and harder to reach. We've already reached out and worked out mutual aid and automatic aid agreements with the Magnolia Fire Department, or Montgomery County ESD for Crown Ranch area, with Tri-County for some of the stuff that's along the county line there. We're just ready to help. It doesn't do us much good to just stay within the city limits of Todd Mission. We could have done that without coming before the Commissioners Court. We're closer. We just want to get out there, give our citizens a hand, and have another fire department. In there, you'll see a lot of the information on the additional apparatuses we have, all the additional training that we've gone through. I think we're required to have about 48 hours of training. We're at over 100 hours of training already this year. We're just here to help and help out the corner of the family. Let us know if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. I did a little research yesterday in preparation for today's meeting. I talked with Cat Lee. Cat, if your memory serves you well, correct me if I'm wrong in any of this that I'm giving, but I asked the Plantersville Fire Department, what is, on this map, what is the area that they're covering? And at the present, if you look at the yellow, it would be 106.875 square miles.
That's the yellow and the Todd Mission group.
Oh, the yellow and Todd Mission?
That's what they respond to now.
I'm sorry, say that again.
That's what Plantersville responds to at the moment.
Okay, is the 106, 107 square miles. The Todd Mission area is 30.16 square miles. So we take the 30 from the 106, and that still leaves Plantersville about 70-something plus square miles. So double the area of what Todd Mission has laid out here. One of the other questions that I had, because Crown Ranch is a subdivision that is accessible by 1486 only at this time, and 14, the Plantersville Fire Department, to get to Crown Ranch entry, is 61,000 feet. You can do the division by 5,280 to give you the miles, but it's 61,000 feet from Plantersville Fire Department to the entry of Crown Ranch. The Todd Mission Volunteer Fire Department, because they have to go south, across, and around, for them to get to Crown Ranch is 55,000 square, excuse me, 55,000 feet. So distance to distance, we're talking about a mile difference. So I don't see anything terribly significant in either department hitting Crown Ranch. One of the things that we did look at with Cat Lee's maps yesterday is that if Crown Ranch did connect one of their roads in the addition over to the Todd Mission area, they have to make like a 900-foot run. I believe that was right. Do you remember? A little gap that Todd Mission could get there if Crown Ranch would put in another 900-foot of road?
Yeah, if they connect it to 249, it's like-
Two, I'm sorry, that's right, to 249. And then if that was the case, then both Plantersville and Todd Mission would have access off of 249. Thank you. Is there anybody from Plantersville here, Fire Department? Yes, sir? Do you want to, can you speak on behalf of Plantersville Fire Department? Okay. Well, the only issue, the only thing that I think we ought to consider, Court, and then when I'm open to options, is that who's going to do, who's going to give the best coverage for the citizens? I mean, I don't think we need to be in a turf war, even if the fire departments are.
Right. I'm from Richard's Fire Department, so I have nothing to lose or nothing to gain from this decision either way.
But you do represent the association.
I do represent the association at this time. From looking at it as a common sense spectrum, I would say split it at the highway, the blue line, the 249 highway. Split it there, give it two or three years, and let's see what happens.
Doesn't, and I'm not a strong student on the association rules and regulations, but doesn't Todd Mission, they're on a probationary period for how long?
Yes, for the first year, for one year.
So on that first year, when we tone out Todd Mission, does Plantersville also get toned out?
Yes.
Okay, so we have both departments that'll be toned out for the first year.
Correct.
And for our audience, that means dispatch is saying, okay, Todd Mission has gotten notice, and Plantersville has gotten notice, and both are going to respond. And that goes on for a year.
Right.
At the end of the year, what does the association then do?
We discuss it, talk about it. We look at accident, vehicle accidents first. Do they have the rescue, do they actually do have the rescue training that they say they do? Do they have the structured fire training that they say they do? And if everybody's agreeable that they do have the training, and they will, like for instance, they'll release them on structured fires. They can run structured fires, well, they won't ever run a structured fire by themselves because they have automatic, mutual aid anyhow. So automobile wrecks will be probably the first thing that gets turned loose. Yes, they have the training. They can run automobile wreck by theirself.
Okay.
Or even ground cover fires if they, you know, this is new water. We don't know what we're getting into. We see it written down on paper, but actual, when time comes, we don't know. If they do have the people to run 24 hours a day or not, you know, that's the question of any new fire department. And we did the same thing with Whitehall when they come in. We had them on a one-year probation on stuff.
Now, in order for Todd Mission, and I'm just being redundant here, but in order for Todd Mission to be a part of the association, they have to have paperwork showing that all of their people are indeed trained.
They did.
Do have the certificates, whatever the certificates imply.
They provide all that.
But the year's probation is kind of an eyes-on from one department to another.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
In terms of run calls, if you have both departments responding, how is that handled for the first year in terms of reimbursements?
The county pays double.
Is that what we do with Whitehall?
Yeah. We have a fire department, another fire department in the county, for instance, that is on probation on rescue. So anytime there's a automobile accident with entrapment, then another fire department's automatically paged until they say we can handle rescue.
And that department's, you're toning it out too because you have one that's on probation?
On probation for rescue, right.
Okay.
And this line, as it's drawn, is currently what Whitehall has been covering? Is that what I'm understanding?
No, be more specific.
You said earlier something about the area.
The shaded area, what you're looking at right there, green. Plantersville now covers that territory. That is what Todd Mission has asked for. That's the territory that Todd Mission has asked for.
Okay, but what did we say earlier about Whitehall?
The red line there on your left.
This one?
On the west side.
Yes, that's the boundary line. That's the old boundary line that has been in place for several years.
So Whitehall runs up to that line?
Whitehall runs up to that line, and on one of your maps, Whitehall has already signed off on it. I think your little map that you had, the Whitehall Fire Chief has already signed off on his side, agreeing to stay, to keep the line the same.
Did Todd Mission take in any of Whitehall's area at all?
No.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Vickers and I got together and ju-
Do you want to step to the podium so we hear on the mic, please?
My bad. Chief Vickers and I got together and looking at, from his station to our station, the halfway point meets about 302, 304. And we discussed if he needed to actually take anything from us, because he might be maybe a quarter mile closer. And he said, no, he'd like to continue to let else have it, but he would like to get a mutilate agreement where some of that stuff on the side that bumps up to Whitehall, where Whitehall is technically closer to it than Plantersville, we should be mutilating with Whitehall at that point instead of Plantersville, because they are closer at that point. And as a suggestion, since 249 is not there at this moment, there actually is a creek off 1774 that is not going anywhere. It is, it's going to stay there. If we needed a natural barrier between departments, because I'm not in this for a turf war. I'm in this for whoever's closer. Now, like talking with Whitehall, if there was anything that we'd circled that he wanted, if he's closer, I was willing to let him have it. It's about quickest response and who's closer. It's about the citizens. So the creek itself is a good barrier as well down 1774. We would also be willing to take the creek and south of the creek. That way you've got north of the creek, south of the creek. It's an easier barrier there.
The creek is a little bit north. Correct me if I'm wrong. The creek, according to the map, is a little bit north of 249 on this map, is it not?
I believe that's correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm just saying, since 249 is not here, and if we need a barrier, so it's not a turf war, the creek is, in my opinion, a good barrier.
Ms. Lee, would you come to the podium, please? And identify yourself.
I'm Cat Lee. I'm the GIS coordinator for Grimes County.
For those that might not know, what does GIS stand for?
Global Information Systems. I do the mapping and programming 911. Using natural barriers like creeks and that sort of thing is not specifically great when it comes to setting boundaries on maps.
Okay.
So I wanted to kind of squash that before it kind of got, because I'm like, those can be big nightmares because you're running through people's pastures, and you're running, so you get into a turf, you get into a thing where, okay, this driveway, I could get to it from here, but I can't get to it from here. So it's not ideal to use as a boundary.
So it's better, state, boundaries stay with the concrete man-made or man-made roads?
Yes.
Or person-made roads?
Or property, or property boundaries, parcel, property line boundaries.
Yeah, okay.
Those are the things that we can just stick with.
Okay, thank you very much.
And this map pretty much shows response times between, like the equal response time for the most part from both departments, correct?
There's a gentleman, sir, if you'd come to the podium. And I think you indicated you're a Plantersville person?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I am in their present zone, yes.
You can speak from there, but, because you got a mic hanging over your head.
My name is Delano Smith. I am in West Magnolia Forest, Section 10. We have 67 lots. Three of those are divided. We have 38 homes in that division, that subdivision.
Yes, sir.
At this time, we are satisfied with Plantersville Fire Department. And we feel that if Todd Mission takes over, we will be a stepchild. And only if they don't have somebody else do someplace else, then they will show up at our locations.
Do you have reasoning for that feeling?
Yes, sir. Go back to the fire 2011.
Yes, sir.
King George wanted the Plantersville Fire Department come and sit at their house, at his house, to make sure that his house didn't catch on fire when the fire department was busy fighting fires.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to make another statement?
Sure.
Yes, sir. Unpopular, you know, contrary to popular belief, George has absolutely nothing to do with the fire department itself. It is completely different staff. The city is separate, the fair is separate, the fire department's separate, and the police department is separate. George doesn't even know who I am, let alone any of my firefighters. We've never even seen him. So George cannot come in and dictate to our fire department what can and can't be done. Now, can he dictate to the fair what can and can't be done at his property and his festival?
Sure.
Absolutely, but we have nothing to do with that.
It would have been a whole lot easier if the fire departments would have had this resolved and said, Commissioner, we'd just like you to approve this.
Yes, sir, it would have been.
Judge, can I ask a question? How many square miles within the city of Todd Mission?
How many, within the city of Todd Mission? I cannot tell you. Cat, do you know? I know Plantersville is one point-
I'm in about 700 acres.
So a square mile is 642 acre, 640 acres.
So if you do what Plantersville's asking you to do, you paying $32,000 a year to Todd Mission to cover one square mile?
And we only have 802 square miles in the county.
Well, I think, you know, for the safety of citizens, the response time, whether it's 30 seconds difference is, could be very, very vital.
Yeah.
So it looks like there's been a lot of research as far as what, where the response times are on these roads. And I think that's kind of what we need to do, and maybe even, you know, look into for all their fire departments to make sure we've got all those response times down to the 30 seconds if it has to be.
Is that a motion?
Hmm?
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I move to set the boundaries as presented.
I second. Is there further discussion? There's a motion before the court by, let me get back to my paperwork. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number six by Commissioner Mallett. Seconded by Commissioner Dobinsky? Yes. Seconded by Commissioner Dobinsky to accept the boundaries that are presented before the Commissioners Court on attachment number six. Is there any further discussion before we take a vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Sir, we'll ensure that all citizens are taken care of equally through the fire departments. We will. Agenda item number seven, Grant Works. I believe we've had a request on this to table. It was to discuss, consider, and adopt a resolution designating an engineering service provider to complete project-related engineering services for the Central Land Office Community Development and Revitalization 2015 CDBG disaster. Recovery funding authorized by County Judge's signatory. See attachment seven. It was a request from a road and bridge engineer to table this.
We still need to do some interviews. We've narrowed it down to two engineering firms we're going to interview.
Okay. Is there anything else that you want to share with us on that, or?
Not at this time. We will have to interview those. What's the date on that, 7th? The 7th of November, I believe, is when we're going to interview them. The seventh of November, I believe, is when we're gonna interview them.
Okay, once y'all have that resolved, then you'll get with Shereen to get it back on you, Judge. Okay, thank you Commissioners. Agenda Item Number Eight, Grimes, Grimes Central Appraisal District, Mr. Shannon Sanders, if you'll make your way to the podium. He's Assistant Chief Appraiser, Agenda Item Number Eight is considering take action to approve the twenty eighteen tax rule, see Attachment Eight. I've reviewed this, I know the other Commissioners have probably at least reviewed this, Shannon, would you just kinda debrief what we're looking at?
Uh, yes, sir, uh so this is pretty much the last step in the truth and taxation process. Uh, we approved, we uh, we certified the appraisal rule in July. And then we came in and we provided the effective and rollback rates to the court. And court proposed a rate, the court went on to have some public hearings and adopted a rate. So we have taken that adopted rate, we have applied it to our appraisal rule to make a tax rule. And it's just a formality to approve that tax rule. And I, I hope everybody's got my uh attachment there where the tax rule is broken down, but uh order approving the tax rule there is what we're asking to approve today.
And it does require my s- uh signature and then the uh County Clerk's signature. Are there any questions for Mr. Shannon?
Is there any specific wording that this one needs to contain, like some of the other motions we've made?
Uh, no, sir.
If there are no questions, I make a motion that we take action to approve the twenty eighteen tax rule as presented. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Eight by County Judge Joe Foul, seconded by Commissioner Barbara Walker, all in favor? God, again, coming.
That was Commissioner Dobianski for the record.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, motion carries. Agenda Item Number Nine, considering take action to approve tax assessment collection agreement between the Grimes Central Appraisal District and Grimes County effective January one twenty nineteen to December thirty-one, twenty nineteen, and authorize the county judge's signatory, see Attachment Number Nine. It's my understanding that uh this is effectively the same, that wording that we've done in the past. Dates and names have been changed where it's appropriate. Ms. Murphy, did y'all get to review this, the, the amounts of this contract compared to the last contract?
Um, I'm not aware of any changes in the rates, no, sir.
Are you aware of any changes in the rates?
Um, no, sir, uh when we provide our budget to y'all.
Right.
These are the-
The numbers that came out of that budget and we've already approved that budget. So, this is just the, the formality of the contract. Mr. Foltz, have you seen the contract?
Uh, Judge, I have briefly, but my staff has reviewed it, it's the same as the last year's, except as you pointed out, the dates are changed. But also the amount, now the quarterly payment is one thirteen and some change, last year's quarterly was one eleven and some change. Before, the year before that was one oh four, then some change, and the year before that was ninety-nine and some change, so it's steadily increasing.
So the change is always going up, right?
You got it.
So that is dependent on your levy, so as your levy rises up.
Okay. Well, I stepped out on eight, who wants to step out on nine?
I uh make the motion to approve the tax assessment collection agreement between the Grimes County Central Appraisal District and the Grimes, and Grimes County, effective from January first, two thousand nineteen to December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, and authorize the county judge's signatory.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Nine by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, motion carries, Mr. Sanders, thank you.
Thank you.
And give our regards to Mr. Bennecke. Agenda Item Number Ten, Emergency Management Subdivision Coordinator David Lilly, considering take action to approve procurement of ten automated external defibrillators, better known as AEDs, from Sentas Inc. To be installed in county buildings, see Attachment Number Ten. Mr. Lilly, do you wanna, even though we have a hard copy, do you wanna explain what we have before us?
Yes, sir, uh after Commissioners Court uh decided to have this table uh from our last meeting, I went back and I advised the three companies that had submitted quotes and Sentas sent us a revised quote. So this one that you have in front of it, in front of you, uh it is a lower price than what they had originally quoted. What it doesn't show on here is the three numbers, if we're looking at purchasing, the three numbers at the top, which is for ten AEDs, uh fifteen thirty-six fifteen each, comes out to fifteen thousand, three sixty, one fifty. And then the uh life-ready service is a separate item, that's thirteen forty-seven fifty. And then finally, the cabinets, uh that's another additional, uh seventeen thirty-three thirteen. So, let me, give me just a second here and I'll get you the actual total, overall total to purchase those with the cabinets and the life-ready is eighteen thousand, four forty-two. And the other quotes have not changed, uh I did not hear anything from Heart Ready or Heart Safe, uh but Cardio Partners, uh the gentleman there, John Wirick, I believe his name is, he reached out to me, or Keswick, I'm sorry, John Keswick, he reached out to me uh on Monday and discussed that, you know, they're not looking to change theirs. So, uh theirs is still at thirteen seven thirty. And that's again, including all three of those elements, they call theirs uh compliance management, but it's basically the same service as the life ready, it allows these units to be treated or used as medical devices.
Mr. Lilly, I appreciate the homework that you've done on this and the research, but when you come in with eighteen thousand, four four two, when you and I initially discussed this way back when to, to do some review on this and check and see what was available. And Chief Green's here, I know that we supplied some defibrillators to patrol or deputy patrol vehicles for the county. And I thought we were getting donations from organizations throughout the county, Crime Stoppers, Republican Party, somebody else and somebody else, and I think they were requesting a thousand dollars per unit.
Yeah, I, I don't recall the exact price per unit, but-
Todd Green from the Sheriff's Office is now speaking. Go ahead, sir.
I don't recall the exact price uh per unit, but yes, uh they were purchasing donations from various uh entities and organizations throughout.
Mr. Lilly, do you remember, do you remember that, or that part of our discussion, or cost?
Early on, but uh subsequent to that, uh the discussions that he's had since then has been just simply looking at procuring them. So that's what I operated under was, you know, going out and obtaining three quotes with the focus, of course, on possibly retaining Sentas as the one that would provide them, but again, providing the court with three valid quotes from different companies that provide the same basic uh item and service. So, I have not approached the uh helping agencies to see if they can help the county out by donating them. I am looking to do that for the fire departments, cause the volunteer fire department.
Sure.
But I'd be happy to go ahead and extend that for the entire county, to see if the agencies can help us with these so that the entire cost is not in the county.
Well, I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't mind you talking to, I'm, I'm not suggesting we go back to these organizations throughout the county to get them to donate to cover the cost for the county. If they'd like to, that's awesome. But what I'm getting at, this is almost double the price of what I thought we were originally talking about, or at least what I was originally aware of, and maybe the prices have changed since then. And I-
Cardio, Cardio Partners is actually thirteen seven.
Yes.
The next quote.
While, while you're looking at it.
It's also with a one-year, I guess, management for forty-five dollars, is that right? Which is the inspection.
Like I said, their service, the compliance management, is forty-five dollars per unit uh per month, not per year. So I, I take it back, theirs does say one year.
It was my underst- again, my understanding on the units that we got from the Sheriff's Office, that anytime we activated one, we had to send in the data and the pads, but they would free of charge replace the pads and send back whatever registering device collects the data. Now, the only downside of that is I don't think their turnaround is twenty-four, forty-eight, or seventy-two hours, I think their turnaround is like a couple of weeks, which means you might have to have one or two units in reserve, so if we activate this one today, then a deputy needs to be able to have one that they can put back in their car for the next shift as they come on. But even at that, I mean, I'm, I'm still thinking it was around a thousand, or even less than a thousand dollars a unit.
No, I spoke to Ms. Ritchie, Rhonda Ritchie.
First responders lady?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir, who uh secured those for the Sheriff Department, um along with Mr. Chris Kell. And they um said that they were less, a little less than a thousand dollars. And um they don't, they were not required to pay a management fee also. And that it was um exactly like you said, once they would send the information back in, then they send them pads back. But she also said they had also, uh along with purchasing the units, they purchased a few additional pads, so they would have-
Oh, okay, the pads, gotcha, alright.
Yeah, and I know they did, of course, uh the Grimes County Emergency First Responders Association did extensive research, I mean, this is their field. This is the equipment they use on a daily basis, they did extensive research on actually getting the best models and units uh for the county. So, I would maybe reach back and uh go out for a bit to that company also, and that way-
Which company was that?
I believe it was Sterling, but we, we can get that information.
Cause I understood the ones you guys had were Sentas.
And um-
No, she, she wasn't familiar with Sentas when I talked with them.
It is, it depends, you know, they went through the company, through the vendor, probably three or four different units, so I would probably reach back that, maybe we could standardize and everybody be on the same units, so when there are issues with interswapping change, additional training and stuff like that also.
Can you, thank you, can you explain what the management fee is with Sentas?
Uh, it's the uh life-ready, which basically is again, providing that coverage on the device. It's in basically the equivalent of a prescription for that device. And uh they did say that if we could find a doctor within the county who was willing to sign off on the devices, we could forego that cost, cause the devices themselves have to be certified in some way by a licensed medical professional, such as a doctor, to be able to use them without any potential liability, so.
Okay, and the liability, and Mr. Foltz, that's where the Good Samaritan law comes in, do we have, do you have concerns for us in the county if we have these units throughout the buildings? That there's an issue of they didn't do it right and Uncle Bob died, or, or Uncle Joe, excuse me, if you like. Uncle Joe died?
Uh, I, I think that if we do the training, if we have training.
Yes, sir.
Multiple people in each building.
Yes, sir.
Then I think the upside is far greater than the downside.
I would agree, I would agree. But I didn't think that, I wouldn't want that hesitation to cause the court to set in doubt, when I could get involved with helping our citizens. I'm, I'm surprised we don't have them in buildings already, but, a lot of surprises.
Uh, and it's also possible on that price that they got for the ones that, I guess it was the Lions Club, if I remember right? Who was it that purchased?
Well, I know the, I know the Crime Stoppers per- yes.
I was a member of three.
Would you come to the podium and identify yourself, please?
My name's Connie Clements, uh I was a member, I'm a member of three of the four organizations that donated, that was Crime Stoppers, Grimes County Republican Party, Grimes County Republican Women, and the other organization was Friends of Grimes County.
Okay.
And I believe that was a total of seven.
Okay, seven units?
Seven units, yes, between the four organizations.
And, and they were like a thousand a unit, is that what you recall?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Now, all those organizations are uh nonprofits, is that right?
Yes.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, all of them are.
Okay, the only reason I ask that is, like I said, it's probable that they may have offered a, a lower price based on the nonprofit status?
Well, we're a nonprofit organization.
It wasn't based, it's-
According to the auditors, I understand, we don't make a profit here.
According to the information I received, it wasn't based upon that, no. The only other concern, Your Honor, since I'm speaking.
Go ahead.
That I have is the funding for this. Okay, when you initially started out, I think you thought that it was a lease agreement and that you had enough money in your budget. Where would the funding come from this, is my next concern.
It's not budgeting, it would have to come from fund balance.
And according to, in order for this, this is, has to be an emergency, unforeseeable for us to go into-
Same standard as other budget amendments, yeah. The same standard as other budget amendments, yeah.
Which would be?
Well, you all have adopted a policy of, yes, an emergency or like an emergency, yes.
Okay.
If it's unforeseeable, yeah.
It's, it, okay, an emergency has to be something unforeseeable, is that what you're saying?
That's the standard, that's the sta- You're asking me to say too much. That's the standard that is in the local government code, correct?
Yes, sir, that's where I'm getting to.
Yes.
So.
Not always the standard that is utilized.
Yes, but, but the standard nevertheless, according to the statute. And that is a, a concern to me, especially when you're talking eighteen thousand dollars.
Well, I, I agree with what you're saying, but I don't think we're gonna be talking eighteen thousand dollars by next week.
Then I would say we need to find it in the budget, the current budget. I mean, have we looked to see if we're talking about putting in Road and Bridge, is there somewhere in Road and Bridge budget? Or is there somewhere in four twenty-four, um, uh various department budgets to where we don't have to do a budget amendment, I mean, that's something we don't want to get in a habit of doing. It's going in, I mean, that was, if this was gonna be-
There's gonna need to be some training as well, right?
Yes.
For the use for a poor building, so I think maybe if we can try to put as many in possibly. And I think, like we were saying, probably try to get the same type of, of apparatus as well. But if we can just work whoever's gonna train and which we get trained and kinda put each, you know, building as we go, that we can actually budget.
And maybe look at the number of units we're purchasing, um and purchase what we can out of the current budget we have until we can do better, but we don't wanna get in habit of doing better budget amendment, I mean.
Judge, I've got a couple of comments.
Sure.
Taking it outside of the box.
You wanna identify yourself?
I'm Philip Cox, Commissioner Precinct Four. So after last week's meeting, I did some thinking about this, and certainly a good thing to have on board in the event that they're actually needed, but I had some questions about if in fact they're needed, who would be the people that would utilize these? And so, it's my understanding, based off the research that you provided, that in order to use these, you have to be certified in CPR and AED use. And I don't necessarily know that we have any staff on campuses here that would be interested in becoming certified to use these. And if they are, going back to the HR aspect of that, we've put a great emphasis on job descriptions and what each employee is responsible for doing. And if they do go through the training and they do become certified, is there somebody willing to add that requirement to a job duty? is there somebody willing to add that requirement to a job duty? And how are we gonna pay that? Is that gonna be a stipend pay for extra duty? And will the elected officials and department heads allow their staff to do that? Because ultimately, they're responsible for the departments and their employees, and what they're doing on county time. Um, and I certainly respect the county attorney's opinion, but the Good Samaritan law is one thing, but if one of these AEDs is improperly utilized, even if you are protected by that, I believe you still can be exposed to some liabilities. Another aspect of it is if we do pay for training, and there's an incident that requires the use of an AED, and the people that are trained, or a person that is trained is not here or fails to act, are we then liable? Because we've expended the money to train them. I believe it's a different environment than having them in the sheriff's department vehicles, because those people are actually trained to deal with situations. So these are some considerations that I had, that I don't necessarily know that I have the answers to. But before we jump off a cliff into this and we spend several thousand dollars, we need to have some sort of game plan lined up on, I think, on who's gonna do it? Are we gonna pay extra for that certification? And how much are we gonna pay for it?
Can I speak, Judge?
Sure.
Uh, just, uh, Commissioner, you raised several very good points, very good, uh, issues about this too, uh, but I would also ask you to consider the other side of the coin, and Judge, you and I talked about this. What is the potential impact on the county? If we have the ability to provide these devices, get them out into county buildings, where we have the public coming in, and we have our people coming in to work, and we don't act on that, and then God forbid we do have someone who has a heart attack. So, you know, you have to kind of weigh both, you know, you know, there is a risk involved here, there's always a risk involved with any of these kind of things. But you have to try and balance that risk as much as possible. Again, as you know, my focus has always been the safety of the public and our, and our county citizens. So, I'm looking at it strictly from that viewpoint, but I understand there are other issues that you have to take into consideration before you can make a decision on this. But I would ask that you look at both sides of that coin. And again, we do have a precedent to that, we did have one of our, uh, sheriff's department employees that had a heart attack, was it last year, Todd? Couple of years ago, the AED that was there, they had one available, it saved his life. So, another thing to say too is, yes, it is important to have people trained on how to use these, so that they have more of a comfort level on them. But, to be honest, uh, I've actually been trained on them before, and, you know, I would like to get refreshed on it, so I'm more familiar with it. But that's really what that training does. Uh, anybody can access these, and it's what, what we're trying to do is provide that opportunity, so that if, God forbid, something like that happens, it could be a member of the public that'll pull that off the wall. Anybody that feels comfortable enough to do it can take it off the wall and use it. And they are pretty straightforward on how to utilize these devices. So, again, just offering that for, for the consideration.
And they do come with verbal instruction, you know, when you initiate the unit.
It actually has a built-in voice that when you start the process, it takes you, takes you through the steps too.
Well, since I started this, what I'd like to do is table this for one week, and I will work with Mr. Lilly, and we'll do some additional research, and we'll come back with a, uh, possibly an additional recommendation for the court. But if not, then we'll make a decision based on what we have, if we can't find better. Make a decision based on what we have, or make a decision not to do it. I don't wanna read the headlines if we turn that down. Have we been agreed to that, engaged to that court? Yes, alright, so we will table it. Ms. Wagner, will you make sure that's on the agenda for next commissioner's court? That would bring us to Agenda Item Number Eleven, Human Resources Director Lucy Pope. Eleven, consider and take action to place the traffic officer in the Grimes County Salary Structure, see Attachment Number Eleven.
Commissioners and Judge, uh, this position was.
And you are?
I'm Lucy Pope, HR Director.
Thank you.
Uh, this position was just newly created, and so the Commissioners Court approved it in their adopted budget. So, we had never placed it in, in a position on the grade structure. Jessica Rur and I got together and looked at his job description, and we felt like, instead of creating a new box, right, we just put it under the SO three, and created it as a CO three, since he is going to be underneath the Constable Two. So, if y'all will approve that, then we will only make a, a small change to our grade structure.
So you wanna put it under CO three?
Because he is a law enforcement, and he does law enforcement duties. So we put it under CO three dash, we made it CO three dash CO three, in, in the job description.
Do we have it?
I sent y'all, I emailed all of you a copy of this.
Okay.
Let me just pass it down, y'all can look at it.
Ms. Lucy, can you point that out to me?
Commissioner Walker. And if y'all feel like he needs to be somewhere else with the job description you have of him, we can change it.
So, we're, we're approving making changes to?
No, 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 we're just doing his job description first, is that correct?
It says, consider and take action to place the traffic officer on the Grimes County Salary Structure.
Right, and that is the salary structure.
So you're going to?
Place him under this SO three.
Okay, so we're approving his position, the description, and then putting him on the?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
So, o- over to the side, since we did some other clarifications, will he be then put over here?
Yes, yes, after y'all approve it, then we'll put him, uh.
So, did I say that right, we're approving two things?
Well.
Is that correct? I mean, that's how we did the other ones, we did the job description, and then we did the.
We haven't approved the job descriptions for all the other employees. What we've approved is the placement of where they go on the salary structure, based on their job description. We don't, I don't believe we, at least during my time, we haven't been approving, uh, job descriptions. Well, we made an addition to the conviction point, or we made a change there, but.
But we approved it?
Well, we approved it, cause it, uh, dealt with the.
It was a job description.
Okay.
Okay, yes, yes.
So I'm just.
Right, you're right, you're right.
So Judge, I'll make the motion to place the traffic officer in the ground, on the Grimes County Salary Structure as a CO three, that coincides with the provided job description.
Okay, second motion. There's a motion for the court on Agenda Item Number Eleven by Commissioner Cox, second by Commissioner Wobinski. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Twelve, Review and Discuss Policy on Employment Commencement, specifically Section Two, Paragraph One, Taking Action to Change Must Be Posted to May Be Posted, Attachment Number Twelve. Question came up to me that do we need to post all jobs? And my initial thought was, well, uh, give our folks opportunities, but then within particular jobs that, uh, we are ready to move on, or we have a person selected, do we need to waste our time by posting a job that we already had the candidate selected for? So, based on that, if you take a look at the Policy on Employment Commencement, my suggestion is that we change must to may, so we may post internally, and I think that's a good idea in most instances, but I don't know that we have to have a requirement that says we absolutely have to do it on every job.
I talked to Mary Anne Sines with TAC, and she said, it's, it's good to post every position that you have, but if an elected official comes to you and says, I'm not posting that position, you do not have to post that position. Or, you know, but it's good to post every position, but if, if they decide not to, you do not have to. And Commissioner Cox, am I right that you just spoke to someone in TAC regarding this also?
Well, uh, I didn't actually speak to them, there was a presentation of recent training that we went through.
Oh, okay.
Um, was presented by TAC that verifies this, it's just kind of ironic that this came up at the same time, but there is no, according to TAC, no legal requirement that any job be posted. And in fact, they recommend that if you already know who you're gonna hire, that it may be a little burdensome just to post the job, so you can interview people to pass them over, to go hire the person that you were originally planning to hire to begin with. So, from a legal standpoint, there's no, according to them, there's no, no requirement that any job be posted.
In the past, we've gotten into some situations where people were complaining about that, but we do have a policy, correct me if I'm wrong, we have three days to hire from within when we post the position.
Good, fine.
Uh, it doesn't hurt to post a position, I mean, that gives people notice that we do have an opening.
Right.
But if we hire within three days, then we don't need to take application, because we already know who's going in that position.
What I do, if the department head asks me to just post it internally, I have an internal board in my office now. I post it internally, but if a department head says, post it external where everyone can see it, we post it on the internet, we post it out on the board.
And I think it'd be a good idea when we do post them on the internet, if we do put in there that we, you know, we can hire internally within three days.
Right.
And, and, uh, there, there won't be any, any interviews for the position.
Yeah, I think this change gives some flexibility to the people that are gonna be doing the hiring, rather than dictating a policy, you must do this, it can be done, it may be done.
Further discussion?
Could I make a comment?
Sure.
If you move on. The issue, and this, this is from the former policy that TAC provided. So our personnel policy was developed with TAC's assistance originally, and so they had this requirement in it. It's always been my understanding that the concern is due process, and if you have folks who believe they were denied due process, because this is a government hiring, a governmental hiring, not private entity. Um, was I denied due process, you overlooked me for a friend, or you denied me because of some protected status, or whatever it may be? This was to try to overcome that, this was to try to give, uh, equal opportunity across the board. Whatever reason it brings up to, you know, in, in my mind, it was, we all understand that nepotism is absolutely prohibited. Um, so you can't put your, your family in your, in your office, but the question has arisen before, can I hire my friends? And that, uh, was, I think, in, in response to that, my understanding was that we were doing these postings to avoid somebody complaining of that, but there's nothing that prohibits that. And so it's, it, start with the premise that the department head doesn't have to follow your personnel policy anyway. So it doesn't really matter if you put it in there or not, except that you hope that all department heads buy into that. And certainly, I would think that you use the leverage that you have of the budget to say, you should buy into it, elected officials, or else your budget may be affected. But if we, if we pass that hurdle, and we say, what's appropriate in the policy? Obviously, we want people to be giving opportunities to, uh, all qualified applicants, but there's no reason in the world that you shouldn't hire the one that you think is best for the job, even if it happens to be somebody you know, somebody from another department, somebody that you've had some, you know, uh, uh, past experience with. Um, there, there was at one point, though, a fear of doing that, and, and my suggestion would be, obviously, to, to have, uh, department heads hiring the best people.
So, in summary, your suggestion is change it to must?
My, in summary.
Or may, or leave it at must?
Summary, I've just taken about three minutes of your life that you'll never get back. Say to you, the proposal is fine, just nobody covered why it is that that got stuck in there originally. And I wanted to be sure that you all saw that there was a due process issue.
Sure.
And to hear that that came, that provision came from TAC originally. And if they're now saying, hey, you, you can make it more flexible if you want, maybe they've changed their policy internally. Maybe they're giving us the same admonishment that they gave us originally.
And that would be my concern, um, that every, uh, one be given equal opportunity. Whether that person chooses to employ them or not, they would at least be aware of the position being available, and that if they wanted to apply, they would feel as if they had some opportunity to be heard in that position. So, I, I'm in agreement with that. When we went through this a couple of years back, we went through the whole policy, I think that's when we talked about that.
Yeah, I said due process, but due process and equal protection, and that's what you're talking about. It, it's fine, it just is, I think, was intended to avoid, uh, folks getting in trouble by doing something that somebody could complain about, hey, I wasn't given a shot here, and I think it was because of protected class status, et cetera. Yeah, I, I think your proposal is fine. My, my hope, of course, is that we don't have folks that feel like they got left out because of some protected reason, uh, race, or gender, or whatever it may be. Um, but I, I think, again, it should be the case that we are hiring the best people that we can, the most qualified people that we can, and to the degree that you give flexibility to department heads to do that, I certainly think it's appropriate.
Ms. Pope, you're our HR Director, what would be your recommendation?
It's, I'm not, you know, the department head, the elected official, it is up to them to come to me and say, I've got a job that needs to be posted, and I do exactly what they, they, because I don't hire, I don't fire. So I'm just there for them, and it's, it's what the Commissioners Court decides, you know? I feel like every job needs to be posted, I'm like, uh, Commissioner Walker. The county, the whole county needs to know, this position is open, give them a chance. Maybe you have John Doe already in mind to, to hire, but at least you're letting the public know that we have that position open, and we're giving them a chance to come in and apply.
So, elected official, dog catcher comes in and says, I need to hire another dog catcher. Are you gonna ask them the question, do you want me to post the job?
No, if they come in and tell me, this job is open, I'm gonna, you know, my.
You're automatically gonna post it?
I'm automatically gonna post that.
What if they say, I've got a dog catcher picked out, you don't need to post it, I don't wanna go through that, this is who I want you to hire?
I can't tell an elected official, yes or no, I, I'm just there for them, that's what TAC has told me.
Okay, so, alright.
But it's not all elected officials, you also have departments.
I have departments.
That wouldn't work, because according to our policy, if it's from then, they can hire them within three days. Otherwise, it has to be posted. Am I correct on that?
That's what it reads, that's how it reads.
Diana Flore, District Clerk, I only have a question. As an elected official, if it's posted, what are you grinning at me for? Cause I'm probably gonna ask a stupid question, but if it's posted and someone applies, do we have to, as the official, do we have to interview every single one that applies?
No.
Or we can choose who we want?
No, you can choose.
Okay.
You don't have to inter- interview anyone.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know.
But the way it reads, it, it's not, um, saying whether it's, uh, department head or, or elected official, so it's kind of covering both. So, if we have a department that has a department head that's hiring, it's not like the, it, it's not like an elected official that can kind of basically.
I, I made a recommendation on the basis of trying to make it easier to run the county's business. If we want must in there, somebody make a motion that we leave it as is, if some. If we want must in there, somebody make a motion that we leave it as is, if somebody wants to change it, let's make a motion as such and move on.
One more point if I might, what is, the question then becomes, what's the, what are the repercussions if somebody doesn't, if an elected official doesn't follow that? If it's, if the policy says you must, an department head or elected official does not, what's the consequence?
We'll vote him out of office next term.
That's where I, that's the problem I'm having now, because the elected official said no, they did not want to post a position.
Because there was no need.
There was no need.
Yeah, and I saw that as a time saver, so-
Right.
-my suggestion was change may to must and we'll go on with it.
Judge, I'll make a motion to change the policy, specifically Section 2, Paragraph 1, from must be posted to may be posted.
Is there a second?
That's our motion.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 12 by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Votes four to one. Motion carries.
Thank you.
So if you'll make that change and then make distribution, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 13, Road and Bridge, Consider, Consideration Recommendations for Selection Committee and Authorized Negotiation with Selected Engineering Firm to Provide Design Services Related to the 2015 GLO CDBG Disaster Recovery Grant. It's my understanding- That's tied to the other one. So once we have the- So we'll have some discussion, but we'll table it for now? Yes. All right. Table, go to Agenda Item Number 14, Review and Discuss the 96th Annual County Judge and Commissioners' Conference. I put this on the agenda, because Commissioner, I believe, Commissioner Walker, I believe you were given some type of an award at that conference?
Yes, I did. I'm, I'm super excited, it took, what, this is five years and so many months to receive my certificate for Commissioners' Court Advanced Curriculum, I've completed 64 hours of a deeper study into all of the offices, all of the wranglings of Commissioners' Court, whether it be working with our legislators, whether it be working with our local county departments, our constituents, and so on and so forth, and took a lot of time, but I appreciate them for educating us and keeping us on track on what we need to learn and know about, so.
How long, how long was this program for you?
Because of the first year, I didn't realize that that program was even being run, so it takes approximately, I think Jim Allison said, about four years.
Four years, excellent. All right, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Very nice. Commissioner Cox, you attended, any comments or?
Sure, congratulations, Commissioner Wa- Walker.
Thank you, thank you.
I know that was quite an accomplishment.
Yeah, it was.
I was able to complete my yearly requirement, which is nothing in comparison to the four year commitment, but one of the things, or a few of the things that I noticed during the training were that the issues and the challenges that we have are not exclusive to Grimes County. It seems as though some of the issues and the, the challenges that we have in Grimes County are, based on the, the other Commissioners and Judges that were in attendance at the conference, pretty universal, so there's a lot of issues that are, that are handled that other counties have problems with, and so the big issues coming up, at least what I took away from it, were some of the unfunded mandates come down the, the chain, mental health is going to be a big issue going forward, it just so happens that there was some HR presentations that dealt specifically with what we addressed this morning, and that there is no shortage of vendors out there that are willing to step forward and offer their services to the county. So it was a very good conference, I, I learned a lot, and I appreciate the taxpayers for sending me.
Okay. Any other comments?
One other comment, I'm really glad that the state and, and the federal government has taken a position to look at diverting citizens and residents from going into our jails because of an illness, a illness, and there, I'm super proud of Harris County who just opened up a large facility that will have some beds now that will help alleviate them sitting in jail when they need to be in a medical health facility. And so I think the state is starting to realize how big of an, of an impact it is to our counties to have these people sitting jails for an illness that demands maybe one-on-one sheriff office or somebody watching them constantly and checking them, so I think we're moving forward in recognizing that and I'm just super excited about that.
Judge, can I ask a question of those who attended, was there discussion about a proposed bill that may show up to cap property taxes? I know there's been that discussion before, in last session that was a big issue. You know where the rubber meets the road, you know what limited funds that you have, you know what you might face if folks were given an opportunity to, to have an election or have input on every time you decided there might be an increase across that threshold, was there discussion about that?
I didn't hear much said about it at this one.
Jim Allison, in the legislative update, said that that's one of the big things, and Jim Allison is the attorney, attorney firm that works with and through TAC, Texas Association of Counties.
And he's the general counsel for the Commissioners and Judges Association?
Yes, sir. And so his update was that they're going to be full court press, work in the legislatures to not put that cap on, because his thought was, or his comments were, we local officials, officials know better what we need to be doing in our local areas versus the state mandates that come down. So their, his, his proposal was, and I didn't see any specific wording on that, and I forget the legislative attorney that, I don't want to-
Thompson.
He's a larger guy.
Thompson.
Thompson. That's his, that's his main focus through Mr. Allison's firm and with TAC, and he's going to be bird dogging that to make sure that we keep the freedom that we need to run the county's business, or at least that was proposed.
And that was, as I recall, it was a big fight in the last session-
Correct.
-and Judge Lamont was, was involved to some degree in that fight and certainly knowing where he is now, I would encourage all of you, benders here about that, depending upon how you feel about it, but certainly it stands to have a real impact on what you do on a day-to-day basis.
Absolutely.
We did, we did pass over 27 revolutions, resolutions to be presented to the legislators this year, and that's one of the major-
And one of them is in that, is in that plan.
Yeah, there was a, there were several presenters that did comment that there is a level of disconnect from county government to Austin, and that kind of, that issue that you're, you're talking about is one of the issues.
And without putting a cap on, that's not an unfunded mandate, but that just adds to the problem of us trying to fund our county programs and things of that sort, just like Commissioner Walker was talking about, the mental health facility in Harris County. That's a good thing, but our mental health facility in Grimes County is pretty much the county jail, and the paperwork that we got in the class that I went through, that's, you know, we're going to have, what, 12 hours, chief, to get the paperwork ready and then get them moved to a proper facility, even if that proper facility might be 50 miles, 100 and 50 miles, 200 and 50 miles away, and that's a burden that the counties are going to have to cover. So it's a good thing in one respect, it's a burden to some of the rural counties in another respect. Did we sort of answer your question, sir?
You did, I, I wanted to be sure that to the degree that you could get your position out there and to your constituents about why it is that you believe a certain way, it seemed to me it was, it was a good time at least to begin that discussion because-
Absolutely, because they're already in committee meetings.
Right, and I think it's real from, from a, from an average constituent's perspective, yeah, I want to cap the amount that the taxes that the local government can take for me for adverums or otherwise, but if there are real services being provided by your local government, you may really hinder those services, and they may be police, they may be VFD, volunteer fire departments, as we talked about, emergency services and ambulance, not to mention roads and bridges and, and the judges and the court system and the clerks, nobody cared about the county attorney, but all of those other things probably need to be funded, and that's where those dollars primarily come from.
Absolutely.
Also, in discussing that, we know that there's a difference between our urban counties and our rural counties, where it benefits the urban counties a little bit more because they have mud districts and taxes and all of these additional taxes that citizens pay, and that's, that's how that idea came along to, to cap, but when you're a rural county and you're putting that cap on us, we don't have all those additional taxes that they collect in our urban counties, we're, we're basically ad verum, and to handicap your rural counties because of your urban counties, there should be a difference, and I think they are looking at, in some ways, many of the statutes say if you're above 120,000 residents and, you know, they put a number on it, so they're trying to work to where maybe that division should be the number of residents or, or something along that line.
And, and consistent with that, there, you as a court are assisting many municipalities in this county. Todd Mission is, is now got a city manager, and I won't bring up county manager at this point, but they're starting to get their feet under them and potentially, at some point, they'll have a tax base where they can provide certain services, but you have interlokal's with, all the municipalities essentially, other than Navasota, continue to provide certain services, and so-
That's right.
-those are things that may not be consistent across counties or at least across the area.
And we added a city this year? Thank you for everyone's comments. That will bring us now to Agenda Item Number 15, Consider and Take Action Regarding the Burn Ban. I would propose we leave the burn ban where it is, if we need for it. No burn ban. We're in agreement with that?
Yes.
And we'll go to Agenda Item Number 16, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion, we adjourn.
Second. Does that give Commissioner Wobinski? Yes. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 16 by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Wobinski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Do you have any more thoughts on this?